Good evening, folks. I'll call this regular City Council meeting to order if you would all rise for the invocation, which tonight will be by Deacon John Dunlop from Saint Sebastian Catholic Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Vice Mayor Kinschen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us bow our heads and pray for God's blessing. Oh, God, a heavenly Father, we come before you with praise and thanksgiving, and we thank you for the great jewel, the city of Sebastian, which is so wonderful a place to live and to raise families, young and old are here. And so, we ask you to pour out your Holy Spirit and the Spirit of wisdom upon all of our leaders here this evening, that they may lead us in wisdom and knowledge, and that all of the great things which will be discussed this evening will be in good form and good order. And we ask this in the powerful name of our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen. You're welcome.
(inaudible)
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchens. Mayor, Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Iovino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Thank you.
Council, under item five, agenda modifications, I've been asked by the applicant to pull item six A, the presentation from the Sebastian Clambake Foundation, and without objection, I'd like that removed from the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we move item fifteen B to just before item seven, which would make it six point one on the agenda. I believe that we've got some people from the county that want to address that, and they're, as long as they're all here, we can move it earlier in the agenda and give them an opportunity to go back to the White Bureau.
All right. I have just a simple question for the city attorney. That is new business. Would there be a problem moving that item alone to item six point one?
No, there's no problem.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any objection from council to that? All right, thank you. Anything else on the agenda? All right, you're gonna have to remind me of that when we get there, because I'm sure I'll forget. Although I wrote it down. All right, thank you. I have a proclamation tonight for Ms. Karen Bailey for 211 Awareness Week. Can you guys hear all right? All right, this is a proclamation for 211 Awareness Week, February 11, 2000, I'm sorry, February 11 through 17, 2019. Man, that is super hot. Whereas many times individuals need help with meeting life's basic needs, and whereas they may experience times of crisis and are not sure where to turn, 211 Helpline is a central access point, providing people in all walks of life the guidance and support they need. And with over 5,000 requests for help last year, calls to 211 are free, confidential, and available 24/7 with text messaging and online chat. And whereas 211 also has specialized advocacy and support groups that include Help Me Grow, which catches childhood development delays, and daily sunshine phone calls that brighten the lives of our seniors. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim February 11 through 17, 2019, as 211 Awareness Week in the City of Sebastian, and urge all citizens to be aware that if they are overwhelmed and in crisis, just need to talk, or are looking for community services, 211 is available day or night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the City of Sebastian, yourself, the Vice Mayor, and all the council members for this proclamation, and making 211 awareness a priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And we'll now have a presentation by the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Mitchell, I believe you are going to come forward and introduce the individuals who will be speaking. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is this mic working?
It is.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay, all right. I'm like a bad penny. I'm back after last month, but before we get started, thank you again for the gracious send-off you gave to me last month. I'm here tonight because last year, about May, the chamber had an initiative come forward, and we created a committee, and we started working on this. And the presentation you're gonna see tonight is the culmination of all of that effort. Normally, the chamber will bring a program forward or develop a service or a product that meets all of our elements in the mission statement. And just a reminder, our mission statement is to develop and promote business, to promote tourism, and to work on quality-of-life events in the community. And I think you'll find tonight that this program that we're bringing to you hits on all three of those elements in our mission statement. The committee is comprised of chamber members and a couple of people interested, public members, so I'm gonna introduce them to you. Kimball Stadler is the Marketing Director for Captain Hiram's, Amanda Smalley with Skydive Sebastian, Captain Christie Lenz from Casual Cruisin', Nicole Johansson from Amel Fisher Museum, Pete Anderson with Paradola Brewery, Juanita Baker with the Audubon Society, and we had several members from the Sebastian Art Club that also participated. Including all of those folks, our chamber staff has worked very hard on this, Nicole Holbrook, our Tourism Director, and of course, our very brand-new President Amber Bachelor. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Kimball and Amanda to come up to the podium. They've done all of the hard work that's gone into this presentation, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
A pleasure being in front of you tonight. Thank you again for the opportunity. As we present what we're calling the Public Arts Program, and as you can see, it's called Hooked on Sebastian Art. What we ask tonight is pretty simple, to reach a consensus in which there is a collective interest in establishing a public arts program within our current CRA district. We did establish a mission.
One second, Kim.
Excuse me, in the back, just one second. The sound up here is horrible, and we need to have the presentation on the screen. Did you provide the presentation to them earlier? There we go. All right, let's try that.
No, we're good. We're good. You bet. What we ask tonight is to reach a consensus in which there is a collective interest in establishing a public arts program within our current CRA district. We've established a mission which is designed to showcase the charm of our city, promote tourism, and community interactivity, also while generating additional revenue streams. The definition of the public arts program would include murals, sculpture, and also community-sponsored art projects. Some of the program benefits, of course, we cannot pass by that this is a positive economic impact, which we will lend a little more details in the slides following, but also this has increased tourism, which is an attraction factor for us when these initiatives kick into place. And also, we have great nationwide exposure through the Visit Florida Showcase. They are very active, as you all know, when it comes to the mural trail, as well as all of the initiatives they do online as well. So we get great exposure, not only for us as a city, but also our local businesses. As for the economic impact, we've shared a few facts gathered, but two of which I think really stand out. One is that 65% of the visitors to our state take part in at least one culturally-based activity through their visits. And these cultural tourists are on the upswing and are reported to spend 60% more than those not experiencing a cultural aspect to their visit. And frankly, we'd like a little bit of that wallet share. What we've done is done exclusive research, really deep dive. Amanda's gonna go over the research that we've done, and some of the things that we wanted to make sure that you understood there was intentionality, and also some forethought to our presentation tonight. So Amanda?
So what you can see there is we've put together different of our sister communities that we've visited or touched base with. The Visit Florida for the mural trail is on there as well, so you can glance through that site. But these are some of the places that we've visited, Hollywood, Coral Springs, and then our sister communities that are doing the mural trails, which then we could benefit from, because if we do different mural maps, then they're making their way down along the state for the different art shows and such. This is our current inventory that we have, and along the waterfront, of course, everyone loves that alligator, and I've seen kids and stuff ride on it, so creates an interactivity piece and conversation. People just don't talk anymore, but it creates that conversation when they get to see the artwork. This was one of our trips down to Coral Springs, Pompano Beach, and Hollywood. The ring there is actually a bike rack, so, and we thought of, it'd be really neat to have a sculpture or something with waves and a fishing pole would have it as a bike rack, and Sebastian we could envision. And then Humpty Dumpty was a conversation piece down there. Whenever it moved, people would go and pose alongside of it, so it created that interaction, social media. Art attracts visitors. Art supports businesses. It's also interactive piece. Again, when people love seeing themselves on photos now, it seems to be how they communicate with the Instagram and the Facebook and stuff, so they can take pictures and interact in front of a piece of art, and then share that with a hashtag of Sebastian, then it's gonna attract visitors to us and have them have that desire to come to Sebastian just to interact with a piece and seek it out. This one we put in there because even though it's a brighter color, it's done by UK firefighters that travel the world, and they have a fan base that actually travels the world, looking at their different murals, just to pose in front of it. The place to kiss is removable. It's just an interaction piece. People go there, stand there, take a picture, think it's cute, things like that. This art throughout our state shows, it's in Fort Pierce and others, it just shows that art doesn't have to be fluorescent colors. We can keep that charming fishing village feel with the colors that enhance our scenery and is just super appealing with the manatee that hits home with our wildlife that we have in the community. So it's just to show that murals don't have to be bright and abstract. This one's in Titusville. It's called Tromplay. The type of artwork is 3D. It has that dimension. It's a conversation piece for sure. Stops people in their tracks when they're walking down the street to see that. So something like this would be amazing. And this one's in Hobie Sound, again, keeping that charming fishing village feel with the natural tones and colors, the wildlife. So again, it's just to show that murals can be appealing and keep our charming fishing village feel. That's in Fort Pierce, shows their history. They've been there since 1901, created kind of a mural that encompasses a lot of their And then we worked with different partners. This was down on our field trip, and just to get that partnership with vetted artists to know that we're not, we're gonna have artists that will do what we ask, submitting the rendering and such. And then they helped us also create goals when we were meeting with the different communities.
And speaking of goals, we have established quite a few of these, but what we wanted to do is just really bring back the simple fact, as Amanda mentioned, is we do not want to deviate from making sure that we have that charming fishing community. It's very important for us also to make sure that we communicate that we're looking to do is also provide oversight, as well as the financial solutions for each of the projects prior to even presenting to all of you. And how do you do that? Well, trying to control that charm also comes in with establishing mural categories. As we are very well aware, celebrated birds all across the United States, and also Pelican Island, and so many things, so many bird individuals that come to our area. But once again, the history of Treasure Coast, and something that we've deemed as an interactive, which could be as simple as a pair of bird wings, or a pair of butterfly wings, and there is a photo op with someone standing in between. So interactive, and it gets us some really good play, and then also gets us some great exposure from a digital media aspect. But categories are not alone without having a formidable process. So what we wanted to do was offer that we do our homework prior to coming for approval, and our city, our CRA board, our community development would have full review and also approval to these projects. But what you could expect from us is the financial solutions, the vetting, the rendering, and everything submitted prior to asking for approval. And of course, what areas affected? It is our current CRA area. When it comes to some of the fiscal resources that we have, right now at Vero Beach, they are using the GoFundMe strategy, but there's so many other things that we can do, including grants. And again, we would do all of the legwork on all of this, as well as fundraiser donations, and of course, those individuals that are patrons in our area as well. So what we ask specifically is to see if we could have your support for the creation of a murals program, and have staff work with our chamber committee to finalize this public arts program within the CRA district of our city. We only have one question left, and that is, are you hooked on the idea?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions of the individuals? Go ahead.
Yeah, I like the idea. I think maybe we should probably look at it from a citywide perspective as opposed just within the CRA. I can see buildings on 512 that definitely need some painting. But the thing from my mind when I look at this, though, is that from a city's perspective, from the city government's perspective, murals are signs, basically, and pieces of art are hardscape. And so, what we might have to do in support of this is take a look at our land development code and determine whether there's anything within the sign code that could prohibit that, and then modify it so it doesn't prohibit it. And then maybe, there's not a whole lot of hardscape code within the land development code right now. The only reason for not wanting someone to put something like an attractive bike rack in is public safety. So we would need something in the land development code to define what those public safety rules are, so an artist knows that they're gonna put something in the middle of a sidewalk, that they have to do certain things from a public safety point of view. There's also federal and state laws that we have to adhere to. There's certain content, for example, that you or I may not think it's defensive, but somebody has, and they've been to court, and the courts have said you can't do it. So we have to be aware of that and possibly build that in the land development code as well. I think the city's responsibility in this is primarily that. I mean, I see this as a sign, this is basically the submission to our growth management department of a request to put a sign on a building, and it comes from the owner of the building, and the owner of the building requests it. Now, how they get to the point where they're ready to do that, in working with the chamber on financing and so forth, that's, I think that's an issue that's not actually part of the city's process. That would be part of the chamber working with their members to do that, so. And then they submit a request to the city for a mural to be put on their building. Yep.
I very much appreciate your comments.
When we first started the research on this, that was the stumbling block, was the sign ordinance. And one of the things that piqued our interest was the fact that there are communities throughout the state of Florida that have these mural programs. And so, one of the things that we did, and had created a mechanism so that the mural would not fall under the sign ordinance. The way that you do that is you designate an area, and you say this area will be for the mural program. And I know, because we've asked that the city attorney weigh in on the subject, and I'm hoping that there's enough support that you will ask him to do that, but we have found that it has been done in other communities, Hollywood, Melbourne, all up and down the coastline. And the way that they've done that is, again, to isolate an area, identify it for the program, and say that the content of the murals will not be subject to the sign ordinance. That's what we're hoping the end goal will be.
Okay, and I can appreciate that. And the content, what's being painted?
Yes.
Only needs to be subject to the laws that require that we don't allow content that someone has a court convinced is offensive or whatever. So I think, and I don't see a reason why we can't modify our sign regulation so that murals, I mean, there's stuff in our sign code right now that's, pardon my language, but it's almost stupid. And it's a good opportunity for us to even review it, to see if there's other things there. But, you know, we need the land development code to be the controlling factor. If we don't, then when someone brings in a request to modify a building, and they want to include a mural, they want to include signs, then we don't have any point of reference for that. And there's no reason why we can't modify that sign ordinance. I may be speaking out of place, the city manager can do that.
We're gonna need, I mean, we're gonna, this is, this is under, just so we're clear, that we're under proclamations and brief awards. So no action is to be taken by the city.
Right.
Under this, under this item, this is just for you to bring forward to us. I would suggest that I'm not opposed to this, however, I would also suggest that the city has for decades now been moving in a direction that has put in place the laws and regulations that we have. We determined, because of our land, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Thank you.
Oh, no, I completely understand.
No, I don't want to get into a big debate.
No, no.
I just want to have a discussion by council up here about this. Thank you for your presentation. I just want to have a discussion by council up here about this, and I'm sure that the Chamber of Commerce will be working with our staff on this going forward. But we need to be clear that we have determined over the last decade, several decades, what color you can paint your building, what the sign sizes are gonna be, how they're gonna be lit and illuminated. And there's a lot of things that have gone into making Sebastian a very special and wonderful place to be. So as we go forward, we have to be careful that we're not just changing everything that's been done over the years. Now, I know that the chamber's wanting to work with us on that, and I too would like to work with the chamber on that. And if it's the consensus of the community that we want to be a mural community, then I think it's incumbent upon us to go forward with that. But, you know, as it is right now, we've been presented by the chamber an idea, and so I thank the chamber for that presentation, and I look forward to the chamber coming to staff and working with them to potentially come up with some ideas and actually agendize this, or workshop this, where we can have real legit discussions on how we can make sure we protect the small-town environment, and have, through that discussion, how these murals will be maintained, who determines what buildings they will be allowed to go on, the colors that will be allowed, the size of the murals. There are a whole bunch of things that are gonna have to be discussed, and they're gonna have to be discussed in debate. And I just don't think that this is the realm for that debate. So if it comes to us needing to agendize this, or have a workshop on it, I'm 100% willing to do that, so that we can get these ideas all hashed out. But those are issues that are important. Murals don't last forever. Who's to maintain those murals? Who determines what buildings they go on? Why is it a specific building A versus building B? And if the content of the, if the content on building A is objectionable to the person that wants to put something up on building B, you know, this gets into a lot of minutia that we need to get figured out before we just say we're going to start allowing this to completely change, or to change our land development codes that we have worked for many years to protect this community's small-town field. So I'm not opposed to this at all. I just feel that the proper location for discussion like we're having is under a workshop or an agenda item.
I have no problem at all. I'm in favor of moving forward with it, so if the city staff can bring something back to us at some point in time in a workshop, I think that'd be a really good move.
I have to agree. As the chamber liaison and sitting in on the mural committee meetings several times, I was in favor of it from the start when they first showed it to me, so I look forward to the final draft.
So I would encourage that the chamber to get with our building department and start working on some issues to get agendized. All right, thank you very much. All right, that leaves us item six point one.
Right.
All right.
Which is fourteen, fifteen B.
City Sebastian Fire Marshal issue, formerly Agenda Item 15B. Mr. Carlo.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this was brought before you, about a year ago, the city adopted ordinance 18 that 02, establishing a fire marshal for the city. The county since then had objected to that, and there was discussions with the county. I had meetings with the county administrator, with the fire marshal, or the fire chief, and I met with each county commissioner to try to provide them with the background of why the city thought it was a good idea, and listen to their reasons why they thought they had a good idea. Conversely, the city manager, or the city council had met with the county administrator and the fire marshal to voice their objections, concerns, or thoughts, and ideas, and some ideas were tossed about. But at the end, we agreed in a meeting with the county administrator that we would bring it back to you, give them an opportunity to talk to you in a public forum, no violation of sunshine law, to try to talk about why they feel the county should take back over the fire marshal program, and since we have the ordinance in place, it was important for you all to make a decision whether you wanted to stay the course, or ask to have to look at something different. I could tell you that, and since this agenda item came out, I've received several calls from contractors, but that's, I'll let the council and let the fire marshal and the, or the fire chief and the county administrator address the board if that's what you so choose.
Okay, yeah, I would like, I mean, Jason Brown from the county's here, I'd like to hear from him. Jason, please come forward, and of course, your fire marshal, that would be great to hear with you on the issue. It's great to see you down here tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That is the fire chief and the fire marshal.
Fire chief, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Got demoted. Thank you for having us this evening. Thank you for moving us up on the board. We appreciate the hospitality. Yes, as the city manager discussed, we have had discussions with each of you individually to talk about the, kind of the concepts, kind of the issues that had happened in the past. I think there have been some things that don't think it's productive to go into the past, but I think we've had some change in staffing. We've got a new fire chief. We have a new fire marshal at the county, new city manager, and I think it's, our ask is that we take a fresh look at this. I think we can provide some higher level of service. We've talked about things like providing a daily pickup. I know there was some concern with contractors having to go downtown on something to our offices. We've talked to city staff about that we could have a daily pickup of permits, and we could facilitate one-stop shopping and provide kind of a higher level of service. I think we've seen some positive changes with the new fire marshal and the new fire chief. So our question, our proposal is to kind of see if there's an opportunity for the county to provide this service for some trial period, maybe a six-month time period, and see how that works, to see if we can possibly provide that level of service that I think the city is looking for and your residents deserve. I think we've got the ability to do that. Be glad to answer any questions. And if I get into trouble, we're gonna defer to the fire chief or the, or the fire marshal because I know just enough to be dangerous about this stuff. So, he, he may have to bail me out.
That is no problem. Any councilman or staff question for Ms. Brown? I, I do. I, I did, you know, you know, respectfully, I, I do appreciate the leadership that you've given to the, to Indian River County and, and must say that there have been many positive changes since you've taken control. And I've, I've heard that the chief has been, been doing some very good things and making some very positive changes as well. My question for you is, if the city of Sebastian is required to provide for the, the same inspection by, by law, the same inspection that your fire official would provide, why does the county beef the city of Sebastian having their own?
So, I would just say that the history of the, the emergency services district when we consolidated back, back in the eighties, there were different, different county districts. The city bureau had their own thing going on. There was a mixture of, of, of professional firefighters and volunteer firefighters. The voters of the county voted at that time to consolidate the fire district. So, the county provides fires, fire protection, advanced life support, the fire prevention and, and the, and the permitting has, since, since that time provided all of those for the entire county with the exception of the town of Indian River shores, which has its own public safety department. We kind of view it all as a package deal. We think it's important to make sure that there's continuity between the fire permitting side and the fire protection side. And, and that's, that's kind of where my, my board is on the matter.
Thank you.
So, what's the, what's the difference between Felsmir's having their, their own fire marshal and Sebastian's? What's the, I mean, why, why is it okay for Felsmir to do it and not okay for Sebastian to do it?
That hap, that happened at a different time period. I think the thought was, it was let go. Obviously, there's a little bit more activity in the city of Sebastian than there is in, in, in Felsmir. City of Sebastian is the largest municipality in, in the county. I, 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 I wasn't in this position when, when that decision was made. It was, there were different county commissioners. So, our, our, our position is that, that we want to take this as, as a decision on the, on the city of Sebastian situation right now.
And are, are there issues with Felsmir's execution of the fire marshal service?
There have been some concerns in the past. I, I don't want to necessarily go into detail on that thi- this evening, but we, we, we want to make sure that we're providing the, the fire permitting, the review per, per code and as, as one of the, as, as a combined consolidated fire rescue department. We view it as, as, as a package deal. It's all one, one service, your fire protection, your fire prevention and your, your fire permitting.
And is the, is, is there a, a feeling that it can't be done correctly or adequately if it's done by the city?
I don't think that is the county's position that it can't be done adequately. I think there's a, there's a concern that, that we want to make sure that there, there is control over that from, from the county standpoint. I don't, I, I don't want to talk about, I don't, I don't want to say that there's the thought that it will not be done right by, by the city. I think it's, it's a concern that, that my board has that, that they believe we've got the firefighters, they're going and doing the fire suppression in the event there is a fire, and we just want to make sure that there's a consolidated look. There is also some, some problems in Florida statutes that, that vest some liabilities in the fire chief that may not be, you may not be able to get away from that in the event there's another reviewing entity. So, there's some, some responsibilities in, in Florida statute for the fire chief. And if there is no oversight of that by the fire chief, we, we have concerns about that as well.
Okay. And, and the word control kind of sounds like it's an anti-home rule thing, okay? A higher entity wants to control a lower entity, that's the definition of no home rule. So, that's, that's, that's an issue. From my perspective, it's an issue.
We believe in home rule. Our thing is the voters of Indian River County made a, a determination to have a consolidated fire district. For instance, we, we got no idea we want to come tell your police department how to do anything or your parks department how to do anything. That's, that's your thing. It's just the voters had made a determination back in the nineties that it was a consolidated fire district within the county. That's why we're here. I mean, it, what we have is a fairly unconventional setup in the state. Usually, cities might, might have their own fire departments or there may be a countywide fire district. We're a little less, less common, but we are providing that fire protection within the, within the cities as well with the exception of the town of Indian River shores. So, we just view that as a soup, soup to nuts service. And there are the concerns about the, the, the fire chief and his responsibility for things that there isn't a review of within.
And when we, when we talked in the meeting that I had with the city manager and the city attorney and the fire chief and yourself, I, we asked at that time for a list of the logs of the restaurant inspections within the Sebastian. And I don't, I understand is we haven't received anything on that.
I don't think we had the logs to provide.
You don't, you didn't have the logs?
There, there were not logs available to us.
Okay. I don't have any more questions here, but I'd like to hear from the city attorney about the legal, potential legal ramifications. I, that's the first time that I've heard a, a concern about the legal ramifications of that, so.
Okay, well, well, let's, let's get through, uh, through this portion and we'll get into some discussion by council. Any more questions for Mr. Brown? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I, council, I'll just, I'll just start by saying, for me, this issue isn't a count, a county versus city issue. It's not a, a, a Jason versus Paul or a, you know, fire chief versus, or even a county commissioners versus the city of Sebastian. For me, it's a simple issue of level of service and, and what, why people choose to come to municipalities or move to a municipality and, and pay for a higher level of service. There have been some issues in the past and those, those have been outlined and they're very clear. So, the city decided to take action and, and go forward with our own service. And no one has been able to tell me that we can't provide a higher or at least equal level of service to our customers, which are the, the taxpayers, the businesses of Sebastian at the same or less money. I'll ask Mr. Carlisle, is, can we provide the same or better level of service to our customers who are those who have moved into the city of Sebastian at equal or less money?
And, and the short answer is I think, yes, I think we have in the last year. We've, and I'll, and I'll say this, it's not anything to say that the, the county can't provide the service. What we know is, is since we've taken it on and just this week, since this agenda item come out, I've received several calls from contractors. They're not saying anything bad about the county, but they've said how much they appreciate the services they've provided. And in talking with them and in talking with Wayne today, one of the things that, that struck, struck me that I didn't know when I was talking with the, the county at the time, and again, these were phone calls this week. And when Wayne goes out there or his, and he does his inspections as a fire marshal, he's also the building official, so he's also looking at that. So, it's not a one-stop shop just at the building permit side and, and the issuing of the permit. There's also scheduling inspections, and I think that's one area. Can that be overcome? I'm not going to say it can't. I just know, but based on the way services are today from our side, it seems to be, the contractors seem to like that ability to have the fire inspection and some building inspections done at the same time. I think our costs are a little bit less, but it, it, it's marginal. I think our funds for the last year were about forty-five hundred dollars. So, it's, it's not even a cost issue for the contractor, but I have seen a lot of, I've seen, received several comments where the contractors are happy with the service that they've been provided. And, and I can tell you to this day, I've never seen one call and complaint. I haven't been here when the county was doing the process, so I can't say they can't. I can just go by what I've seen and what I've heard from our, our business owners and from our builders.
Yeah, and I, I haven't, I haven't gotten an answer other than that, other than, you know, it, we want it to be seamless as a county service. But there's a lot of services the county provides where we add services to what the county does, that, to our citizens in, in Sebastian. And, and so I can't, until I've just heard that there may be some legal issues with the, the fire chief, then, I haven't gotten an answer other than we want it to be seamless and that's what the voters have, have asked us for. Mr. Stokes, I guess I, the question I have for you is, so, so can we provide, Mr. Carlisle said, our level of services can be provided at a level as high or greater at a, at the same or less money. Legally, does the city have the right to, to provide a higher level of service to our customers that are inside the city limits? In this regard?
Does the city have the right to provide? Absolutely.
Legal right?
Yes, legally.
Okay.
I mean, you know, building a little bit, and of course, obviously, we don't want to try this here or, or in the press or on the dais.
Of course not.
Um, because the county has already expressed their interest to go through, you know, some sort of dispute resolution, maybe even litigation. But, and, and educated minds can, can differ. I've had many conversations with the county attorney about this. We do disagree on this. However, you know, just what you heard here tonight, that, you know, the county manager did talk about these obligations that the fire chief would, would still have, but yet never circled back around to explaining then how that Felsmir has their program. You know, that's going to be the, the, you know, two-hundred-pound gorilla in the courtroom with us the day we ever get to arguing this is because I understand the whole thing about it was a prior commission and a prior administration back then, but the law isn't governed that way. The law is the law. Either it's allowed or it's not allowed. And in this case, it's been allowed there. And for them to draw a distinction by saying, we are a larger community, therefore, the, you know, we're not, we're going to say you can't do it legally because you're a larger community, that's just not legally sustainable. So, yeah, you know, that, that's my legal opinion to you. Clearly, the county attorney is giving different opinion, legal opinion to, to his board. But, but what I'm telling you is that I don't, I don't see the size of the municipality or, or any of these other things as drawing that distinction.
Okay, thank you. I, I have no more questions. Any, any questions?
I have fielded several calls from contractors in the last couple of days regarding this and asking me to stand my ground that they're very satisfied with the level of service they're getting from the building department. They like it. It's a one-stop shop and they don't want us to change the ordinance. I'd like to hear from Wayne. Have you been hearing the same thing?
Absolutely. And I've, I've had architects, engineers, contractors that we've dealt with this past year. And, you know, they're just, many of them have said to me, you know, we really like the idea that you have it here. It's nice to be able to come, just drop off our plans on one location, pay one fee for the permit and, and fire plan review fee and then have inspections that are through us or scheduled, you know, online. We're out the next day, which is, I think, a little different than what the county is doing. So, I think our service is, is good. We, we have a good partnership with SafeBill. We've done quite a few inspections this past year, both annual inspections plus fire reviews and inspections for building permits that had, that were fire-related. So, so far, everything is going really well. It's only going to get better.
All right. Thank you very much. We're having some pretty serious sound issues out here again.
One further question for Mr. Stokes. Are there any federal or state rules that we're breaking by doing our own fire marshal?
None that I know of.
Okay.
When this came up the first time, I did the research then and I didn't see of anything. I'm, I'm not sure exactly, you know, the county manager had mentioned these obligations of the chief. I'm not sure exactly what, what specific obligations we're talking about. I'll certainly look into that and report back to you. But once again, I still, you know, circle back around saying, well, if that would be a legal prohibition here, it would have to be a legal prohibition in Felsmir. And somehow, it's not, so.
Okay.
So, I, I'm, I'm doubting that those are there, but I'll certainly look into that and get back to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to weigh in if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I'm going to play a devil's advocate here. I think this whole issue started well before I got on council and then I got on council and it started to speedball. And we went ahead with the ordinance and what have you. And, you know, my, my position on, I was against it. And I'm, I'm going to say that I'm still against it for, for several reasons. I believe myself and the fire chief are probably the only folks sitting in this room right now that have actually been inside a working structure fire. And we want to provide the highest level of service to the, the citizens of Sebastian. And you do that by putting somebody who has fire experience in that type of role. I worked with Dave Johnson over the shores for years. I find that gentleman to be the highest professional that, that I know. His, his level of deportment, the way that he handles himself is, is above and beyond. His predecessor, Dan Dietz, who also came from the county, is now our, our fire inspector. And we're in the process of actually training in-house fire inspectors, and those inspectors are going to be firefighters. And this is no offense to anybody. I mean, you go to a two-hundred-plus-hour class, and I understand that, that you, you have an understanding of the way that things are supposed to be. But you don't take a firefighter, goes to the fire academy and you put him in the middle of fighting fires out the door. You have to train them. They have to get experience. And you can't get that experience unless you've actually been in a building and you understand fire behavior. It's a very complex thing. It's not, fires are not just, we walk in and we, we put water on it and they go out. There's, there's just so much more to it, the way that they behave, the way that they burn, different stages of fire. And when you take a gentleman like Dave Johnson, who, who the county is using right now, and you, you put him in a role where he's inspecting it, he's looking at it from the building side, but he's also looking at it from the life safety side. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it's about life safety. It's about safety of our citizens. Are we putting the best person in there that we possibly can? I love the idea of the one-stop shop. I get it. I, I, I get it from that side of it. But I don't hear anybody talking about the other side of it. What is the whole purpose of building inspection and fire inspections? It's safety. We're not going to take a brand-new contractor, make him the head inspector who's never swung a hammer or built a house before, right? They don't do that, right? Am I right? When you get your contractor license, don't you have to have an apprenticeship and for a couple of years before you keep even applying, get your licensing? Well, and, and again, it's, I'm not downing the process or what we did. I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate on the side of it and say, hey, look, are we putting the best person in place? And what, what harm would it provide if we said to the county, hey, let's give them a shot, see what they can do? I'm telling you right now to the other four of you sitting up here, I've worked with Dave Johnson. He's a great guy, super knowledgeable. I mean, if I was on a hose line going into a fire, I would want that guy next to me. Now, this is a guy that's going into these buildings and homes and inspecting them. His, his ethics, his morals, I mean, the way that he operates, that's the guy that I want to go, okay, he walked out, he signed off on. And again, Wayne, this is no offense to you. I'm just, other side of the coin here. That's the guy that I would want to say, hey, he inspected, we're good to go and we move forward. And the shores used him for years. We, we didn't want him to go. But he, you know, again, we're not an entity that doesn't support moving forward and bettering yourself. And he got a great opportunity with the county and he went. Now, we have Dan Dietz, another unbelievable guy with a ton of experience in, in fighting fires and, and inspections. I mean, I think we should really take a good hard look at that side of it because everybody seems to be focusing on the one-stop shop and what the contractors are saying. Okay? At the end of the day, the contractors aren't living in these homes that we're building. The people that we represent are. I want to know everything's the way it's supposed to be. And, and if you want to talk about the professional side of it, if I'm in one of those homes fighting a fire, I want to know it's the way it's supposed to be. So, when I'm in there doing what I need to do, the floor isn't collapsing on me or, you know, one of us, God forbid, is, is getting injured or dying in a fire. I mean, it's, this is some serious stuff. I mean, I think we should just really take a good hard look at it and, and consider putting it back on people who have years and years and years are experts in their field doing this and say, hey, let's see how they do. Put a three-month time on them on it. If it, if it falls out, we know this is working, so it's a win-win. We're just, we're just delaying it for a little bit longer.
Okay, can I?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, uh, it, the county, the county's fire inspector right now, is he a fire, is he a qualified firefighter? I understood he was not.
So, I think most of them are.
So, I think most of them are. I think they have, they hired one that is not a firefighter.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah. So...
Is it okay, Mr. Stokes?
Please, yeah, come forward.
Yes, that's true. I hired a civilian at the last position that we hired, and she came from NASA, from the Kennedy Space Center, and she has a specialty in commercial properties, gas-fired fueling systems, those types of things. And we basically have her working on commercial properties with gas heat, gas fuels, those types of things.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I haven't had a beef at all with the county's ability to do the job. I don't, I have not heard safety as an issue. I've heard seamless because the fact of the matter is whoever we hire has to provide for the law to be followed. So, the fire codes must be followed and observed by an inspector. So, I haven't heard safety as an issue. The issue is for our customer, can we provide a level of service? And by part of that level of service, safety is the number-one part of it. So, when I'm looking at it, I don't believe that we're putting someone in there that doesn't have the ability to do the inspections properly. I think they must maintain that those buildings are to code and are built properly. So, I have no issues necessarily with that. Any other issues?
No.
I mean, Wayne, we're meeting or exceeding the expectations. There's nothing less inferior or anything along those lines. So, I mean, if it's working...
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Chris Pinson. I live here in the city of Sebastian, 481 Avocado Street. I also own multiple businesses here. One of them's a tiki bar and grill here on the lagoon. I have two contracting businesses, Indian River Docks. I also have Pinson Contractor Services. And in both businesses, all three actually, we have to deal with, obviously, fire safety and fire protection. And for me, it's a matter of nuts and bolts. It's not just the easiest way to go. I, you know, we all go to the convenience store and pay a dollar extra for a gallon of milk because it's in and out. I don't look at it as a one-stop shop. Let's just get it done as fast as possible. But there is a lot to be said about the amount of detail that is paid attention when you do submit plans, whether it be for building or fire protection. And it is an inconvenience when you come here to submit for a building and say, "Okay, here, take these down to Indian River County, submit with them." And then the timeframes are off. Time is money. And I may have the permit out in a couple of weeks. Fire department's backed up. We don't see that. I'm not taking any credibility away from our fire protection service, but we have rules and regulations and laws that are put in place. We have a building code that's multiple books deep. It says how many nails go in a strap. It says specifically structural integrity, and those same books address handicap, ADA, accessibility, and fire code. So, it's a matter of somebody looking at a set of prints and making sure that it's following that code. As far as going into a building, I built my house. I built a lot of structures that, obviously, I want very well-trained fire department personnel to come in and save the day if we, God forbid, have a fire. But the, I don't think it takes somebody that went into a burning building to interpretate a code that says this is a safe structure. Having said that, one of the problems that we had recently, and it's ironic because this came to my attention, we opened a permit in 2014 to modify some things down at the tiki bar. We closed that permit out with the city of Sebastian. The city of Sebastian closed it out. Of course, we had to go to Bureau, to the county building, to do the fire. We had no fire inspection. We paid the fee. They reviewed the prints. They never closed the permit out. Now, two and a half hours later, we're sitting in the building department trying to figure out why this permit is still open, and it causes delay. So, if there's a delay in that type of activity, then are we really being detail-oriented? You know, Wayne just did the fire inspection on the Archie Smith Fish House project, which is permitted in the city of Sebastian. It's a county-run project where we modified the dock. The meticulousness of his inspection was phenomenal. He even caught a couple of hangers that were not made out of the right material that needed to be changed out. There was multiple things that were done. So, you know, I mean, when we have a small-time community and you're not overwhelmed with the entire county and you're isolated to this community, I think there's more detail spent. And I have worked in Felsmere, and it runs seamlessly there, just like it does here. The fact of the two communities going back and forth, I just, I don't agree with that. And I think I speak for many contractors that couldn't be here tonight, and you all fielded calls too. This is not just a matter of convenience, it's a matter of detail, pardon me, a matter of detail. And I think, like I said, it's, with all due respect, I don't think you have to have experience going into a burning building to find out that fire extinguishers should be placed in a certain area and so forth because that's outlined in a very strict code that we have to follow. Anybody can do that. You could read that book and say, walk in a building and say, with a tape measure, "Fire extinguisher, fire extinguisher, is it good?" You know, it's, I don't think you need that. And I know that the training that Wayne has gone through and also the fire marshal that's appointed in Felsmere is well aware. They, I mean, they're qualified to do it, and it just is a matter of convenience.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Todd Smith. I'm a licensed Florida structural engineer. And I spoke before the council when this issue was brought before them last year on whether to take over these services in this city. Just a couple of comments of what I've heard. Tonight's presentation from the county, besides the references to legal statutes, there's been really nothing said about any improvement in the services that they're providing at the permitting and inspection end, which was a big part of what the public spoke to the council about as being dissatisfied. I've been practicing in this county 35 years, and I have no personal experience with any new changes that the new chief has made at the department, but I can tell this council that the level of service that I see from the engineering side of things is the worst it's been in 35 years at the county fire department. They do a fabulous job, whether we're in the time of a booming economy with just so many projects they're trying to handle. But contractors, they place calls for inspections because the inspection services are not automated. It takes several days for an inspector to call back. It takes several more days for that inspection to actually occur. So, in the business of development, time is money. And so, a lot of the clients, the contractors, are seeing expenses because of the delays at the workload that the county has. I really appreciated the mayor's comments about, you know, people moving to municipalities expecting a higher level of service, and that is what's been happening since this ordinance has been passed and the city's taken over this role. Everything I see with my clients, they are completely satisfied with the permitting service that the city is providing and the inspection service. As a design engineer, I would much rather see a person in charge that has knowledge of both sets of codes, building code and fire code, reviewing plans and doing inspections. Because I can tell you as an engineer, and I hear this, I want to say, once a month out of somebody at the fire department, we can't make any reference to the building code. We can't look at anything in the building code. They are restricted to NFPA regulations. It's the way that division operates. Whereas the building director and licenses a fire marshal, they're, because they're still, I mean, the goal of the Florida building code was to merge, to incorporate everything. And there are still differences between the two codes. So, you know, right now, the city has a building director and fire marshal wearing the same hat, but has the knowledge of these differences in these two codes. I don't have to be inside of a building collapsing to have the experience to be able to go in and inspect that building to keep it from failing. And what the other gentleman was talking about as far as the codes go, that's, you know, us licensed professionals, that's our responsibility to design the plans, to meet the codes, and they're reviewed by the appropriate people. And I strongly urge that the city council stand their ground. And, you know, and I'm also speaking as a resident because I live in Sebastian. I think this has been a good move that the city did last year. The more sovereign our city stays from higher-ups is better for the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I will say, I will comment that Mr. Brown and the fire chief have provided us all with the improvements that they've been making, and they've been very willing to come up and speak with us on an individual basis to talk about what they're doing on the county level. So, they've definitely been interactive with us on a council level and with staff. So, I do appreciate the work that they have done regarding this. So, I do know his presentation this night was brief, and I appreciate that, but he has certainly worked very, very close with us to try to resolve some of the issues that we've had. Anyone else in the public who should speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
My name is Thomas Haynes. I own, I can't even count, I think, five properties, maybe six. And I'm a landlord, so I'm going to look at it from a total different perspective. I don't understand what goes on behind, you know, what they're really doing back in the fire marshal end of it. But I know we, I believe in codes. Codes are important. But time delays are a bit of a problem for us, especially if you're switching tenants. If you're switching tenants and you're trying to get everything approved, it's very difficult, especially when, if it's, I have to go all the way to Vero Beach, and they want to see a diagram of it, and if I modify it, I got to take it back. Like I said, I'm not educated in what they really do. But once you have it under, like, obviously, on Main Street there, if I have a question, I can just run right over there and get it answered. I could stop my guys from working and say, "Hey, what about this?" So, to me, it's a big improvement, especially if you have an unusual tenant that's coming in with a new product, which I did, obviously. And so, I'm all for having it right here in Sebastian.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public who should speak on this issue? Okay, council, so this is an item that's actionable. If someone wishes to change what we've already done, they should make a motion at this time. All right, hearing none. We will now move on to item, I'm sorry, brief announcements. Madam Vice Mayor, for the brief announcements, finally.
Wow, that's a lot of announcements. This Friday night, there is a chamber concert in the park, Wits End, from 5:30 to 8:00. On January 26th, which would be Saturday, the Sebastian River Art Club show is in the Riverview Park from 10:00 to 4:00. On January 27th, which is Sunday, there will be the Four Chaplains Commemoration Service at Veterans Memorial Park at 2:00. Again, on February 8th, another chamber in the, chamber concert in the park, Southern Vine Band from 5:30 to 8:00. And then on February 9th and 10th, the craft club will be in Riverview Park from 10:00 to 3:00.
Thank you very much. Are there any other brief announcements from council members? All right, hearing none, we'll move on, and I will recess the city council meeting and brief convene is the stormwater utility fee credit policy workshop. Done. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is an action item, this is not an action item, this is a workshop item. It was brought about by the change in the stormwater utility fee, and council asked us to go back and look at our credit policy and look at how it was being administered, make sure that we, it was being administered fairly and that it was equitable, and provide opportunities for those individuals that had a stormwater fee increase to have an opportunity for a way to have some type of credit. And I got to give Ms. Frazier and my staff, Tim and Dory and them, credit because they worked very hard on this, and we had a lot of discussions on how to get this done because the original, the original credit didn't have any, we couldn't find any documentation of how some of that was administered. We couldn't come up with an equation to say, "This person got 60% because why, 90% because of why." We don't know if those records were just missed, filed somewhere, but we just couldn't find it. And so, we kind of started from scratch and kind of brainstormed. And Lisa did, and Ms. Frazier did a lot of work looking at other communities and ways that they did different credits. And so, what we brought before you tonight, I think, is a fair and equitable way to administer a credit policy based on data that can be measured, that can be evaluated, can be inspected, can be proven. It's not going to be subjective to any person's ideas. It's measurable. And I think that that's, that gives us some credibility in what we're doing. It sets up for the individual businesses to be able to know what they can do to expect that. And so, we have a draft ordinance in this that talks about that. There's an application process where they can submit their documents to the city. And then there's a formula chart that shows if you meet the criteria, you get a percentage of credit. If you upgrade that, depending on what you do, you can get a 5% per strategy. And we've had residents that talk about, "Well, I don't discharge into the city. Why do I pay the city?" And we looked at that as well, and we think there's a value in that. And so, we provided that. If you have a large parcel of property that doesn't even touch the city's water system, we gave, we took that into consideration and gave that a process, ability to get to a 90% credit. So, you know, I think that staff's done a commendable job on this and provided an opportunity for businesses that never had an opportunity to get a credit to do small things to get a credit on their stormwater impact fee. And the goal is to provide cleaner water going into our lagoon, and I think that's the goal of everybody here, and all the residents of Sebastian want to see that happen.
And it also ensures that those who are getting the credits are deserving of the credits through the process.
Correct, and they have fairly, they're fairly getting the credits through the process. Correct, and there's inspection processes. There's reapplication. Every three years, they have to reapply and give the documents. They've been maintaining the system. And then there's an inspection by our stormwater inspectors to go out and look at those to make sure that they're doing what they need to be doing.
Okay, but before we get too deep into discussion, I have a question. Now, I'm not sure if it's you guys messing with us or if I'm completely missing something on here, but on page nine, under article, section 102-128, paragraph one, says the city council shall have 30, and then that's scratched off, and then 30 underlined. Now, are we intending on replacing the old 30 days with the new 30 days? Or are you just trying to make sure we're paying attention?
That's a very good catch, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize that sometimes when we're doing track changes, it repeats itself.
A hundred percent. No, I didn't know if maybe that should...
It's just 30 days.
I didn't know if you wanted that number changed to like a 45 or a 90 or anything.
No, sir. It actually was being considered 45 days, but we felt that that was making too many changes with other documents, and 30 days is in our ordinance, so we're keeping that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation, sir?
There's a, there's a couple areas we need to make, and Councilmember Dodd brought it to my attention. The same section where it says 102-103C, it should be 124C. And we can go over that if we get to the ordinance part, but there's a couple places in here where we have some touch-up that we need to do that I think were much needed. And we can talk about that when we do the ordinance, if we get to the workshop.
Yeah, I usually don't bring those. I was just confused, that's all it was.
Yes, sir.
Questions from council members to staff? This is a workshop item, so this is time to discuss between us.
Well, I know, I don't have a question, just an observation.
Yeah.
And I, just so people, lots of times we do this stuff and people don't have an opportunity to read all the details. Because what's really, this first part of this stuff, which is the ordinance, is legalese, convoluted legalese, you know? The important thing is this procedure that's back here that has the form and has all the definitions in it. That's the important thing. But basically, for everybody's knowledge, because a lot of people may not understand this, the only way you can get a credit for your stormwater fees is if you make a change to a piece of property that will reduce the amount of impact on the city's maintenance of stormwater structures or if there's physical features to the property that allows you, allows the city to take advantage of the fact that they don't have to provide 100% of the stormwater. And that's either done at the time that a site plan is submitted or it's done when one of these applications is submitted. And so, when a person gets a 90% reduction in their stormwater fee, it's not because we like them. It's because they don't dump any water into our stormwater. And, but we are collecting that 10%, which is basically our administration fee. That's what it costs us to maintain a stormwater system without building canals and all that kind of stuff. So, it's important for people to understand that this isn't a giveaway. This is, you know, this is a legitimate excuse of taxes for someone who's not causing services to be done that requires the payment of those taxes, basically, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm fully in favor. I like to, I love the procedure. Too bad we can't make that the ordinance.
It would be nice, but there is parameters that we must work under. Those attorneys, they got to get paid.
I know, I know.
Anything else?
Just as a point of reference, Mr. Carlisle, and I don't know if it's still there, but when I left the city four years ago, the stormwater fee files were in the file cabinets in front of Mr. Baker's office in the... of Mr. Baker's office, in that open area. That's where all the stormwater fee files were.
Well, thank you, we'll take a look there. I appreciate that info.
They may not still be there, but that's where they were when I left.
Mr. Mayor, I think, well, by consensus of the, of the council, if you're okay with this, um, you don't do public comment during workshops, but you can do it if we go to the ordinance side. Is there anything in this that you think that we need to address differently? Um, I think that, like I said, Lisa and her staff has worked very hard on this, and a lot of good things came out of it.
Well, there was just the one thing that we talked about, and I don't know, we, we talked about the provision where the county, the county tax assessor bills this, the county, you know, they, they expect to be paid, and it appears to me that in our appeal process in 102-128, that we're saying that someone can pay what they think they reasonably owe, but that's not gonna be acceptable to the tax collector. He's gonna want all the money that he billed.
Yes, and you did, you, you did, um, the good faith estimate fees, um, I think you, we agree when we do the ordinance that we oughta change that to pay what is due, and then if they're, if they're successful in the, uh, appeal process, then the city would refund the dollars that they overpaid.
Yeah, okay. That, that was the only place that I saw that I felt like there were some issues that need to be dealt with, so.
So, I guess we, through consensus, would suggest to go forward and put this on the agenda, so we get it done. Alright, thank you very much. Item eight, I will now adjourn to stormwater workshop and reconvene as the community redevelopment area and ask for approval of the minutes.
Don't move.
Second.
Second, I was in favor, I, aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Item B, septic sewer grant program, Mr. Carlisle.
Which one are you, I'm sorry.
Item eight B, septic to sewer program grant, consider changes to grant program, page 26.
Mr. Mayor, was this a workshop?
Sure.
Is it able to add public input?
Sir, if you wanna step up to the lectern? Uh, that was a workshop, but I will, I will allow for your, for, for some input on that. Is that okay?
I.
I know we're up, we don't have a, anything on the agenda right now, or, or, no motion on the floor.
That's, that's, that's your choice, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, without objection from council, I'll take some input from the public. Go ahead, sir.
Are we open on that, uh, stormwater subject again?
That's what we're talking about, yes, sir.
Very good.
Yes.
My name is C. Ann Carey. I have a, uh, little property on the north side of Sebastian, which the stormwater does not go through the city, through their ditches, over their roads, or anything else, so, uh, I'm one of the people that is gonna be looking at a major reduction in stormwater fees. Therefore, uh, I have a few questions about this. Some of these are nuts and bolts questions that are probably best addressed by your staff.
Yes, sir, I would, yeah, I would suggest that you.
So, we'll state to that.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Carey, if I could give you some advice, I would suggest that you give, give, give the city manager a call and, and talk with him about your concerns. This is not an item that we're voting on. This will come before us, again, as an agenda item, so that any of the questions you have will be answered, uh, prior to that meeting, and then we could have some more public input on it, and you can tell us your concerns.
It appears to me that the next meeting is gonna be a final on this, though, that's what I see.
The next meeting is not gonna be a final, it'll be first reading.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, we have the, the draft ordinance on the agenda tonight for you to consider. Changes could be made to that prior to the second ordinance.
Okay, correct.
But because we have to get these stormwater fees in place and get the, get it to the county property tax collector, we need to get this, because we need to give time for these people to apply.
Very good. Mr. Carey, there is, uh, this is on the agenda for, uh, 27th? Beg your pardon?
February.
We have the first reading this evening.
Fifteen A. Fifteen A, there it is, fifteen A. So, under fifteen A, please, please come up under public comment, okay? And I apologize for the confusion on all of that. Fifteen A, we're gonna be discussing it under first reading. That would be a good time for you to come up with your questions.
In this session, a little bit.
Tonight.
Okay. Elsewise, I will get with staff and.
Thank you.
Address some of my concerns, and I'll certainly be at the next meeting. Thank you.
Stay here, cause tonight we're going over.
We're still gonna be talking about it tonight.
Alright, sorry for the confusion and the kerfuffle, council. That moves us to item B, the septic to sewer grant program, page 26, Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this, we had brought this back to you in a workshop and received input from city council on how to amend the process, and taking into consideration, uh, the difference between gravity sewer and storm, and, uh, lift stations. We took council's direction and, and put two different quotes in there, five to 5,000 for a, for a, uh, gravity sewer and 15,000 for a, for a, uh, lift station, and then we used Ms., Commissioner, Councilmember Dodd's suggestion of a 75-25 split. So, it'd be up to 5,000 with a 75-25 split, is the changes we made. And some legal, or not some legal, but some clarification on active septic systems, uh, to try to, to, to find that. So, I think that this, this grant program makes a little more, a little more sense now, in our opinion, and we'd, we'd like staff, like city council's opinion on, on if it's something they wanna move forward with, the new process.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask the question, are you looking for a, a motion to approve?
Correct.
Counsel, what's your pleasure on item B?
I move to approve.
Second.
Your motion is second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item eight B, the septic to sewer program grant? Alright, hearing none. Uh, council, and questions for staff? Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Kitchen.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. E. Avino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all, adjourn the community redevelopment agency and reconvene as a council meeting, and ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
And a second, roll call.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember E. Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Moves us to item 11, committee reports and appointments. Uh, we have an appointment for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We have an opening, and we have one person who is asked to, uh, to take that spot. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I think we should appoint that individual.
Dante Renzi?
Mm-hmm.
I agree. Congratulations. Uh, move us to item B. We have a lot of very qualified and good individuals for these seats. Uh, we do have the alternate member who's, uh, asked to move into the, the, uh, term that's to expire on, uh, seven, one, 2019. I would, I would move that, uh, Ruth Callahan move into that position, however, the term should expire in 2022.
Second.
Counsel there? Alright, now we can fill the term, or we can fill the seat that was current, previously held by Ms. Callahan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure on any of these three incredibly qualified individuals?
I'd like to nominate Gerald Roseberry.
Anyone else?
Sounds good.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Roseberry. Uh, you are now in the alternate position.
Oh, there he is, he's raising his hand down.
I didn't even know he was here.
Yeah, on the, uh, Natural Resources Board. I really thank everyone else for applying for the position. Uh, it's really a, like, unbelievable qualifications on the individuals who are applying to be on the Natural Resources Board. Uh, thank you all very, very much. Uh, continue to stay involved. Leads us to item 12, public hearings. Item 12A, we have a second reading and public hearing on ordinance number O-dash-18-dash-zero.
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, amending land development code section 54 dash 2 dash 7.7 regarding walls and fences, providing for severability and repeal of law, of laws in conflict, providing for codification, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is the second and final reading and proposed adoption of this ordinance. City council has directed staff, we, we get these, uh, applications for eight-foot fences, and so we've talked to city council, and we've drafted this ordinance that allow that to be done administratively. Some of the other highlights that this ordinance does, it, just from its aesthetic point, it puts the, requires the finished side of the fence to be facing outward. It removes language and secondary easements, and it talks, some of the other things it talks about is, um, it requires them to record the affidavit. And why I thought that was important to add that to this was because if you sign an, an agreement to put a fence in an easement and you sell your house, and the person who buys the house didn't know that that requirement was there, and the utility says you need to move your fence so we can work, it could've created some confusion. So, I think we've addressed some of the concerns that we've, we've had in, in trying to streamline the process for these fences by making several of them administratively, except for those that have to go before you for a variance. So, we'd ask the, the council to consider adoption of this ordinance on its second and final reading.
Alright, thank you.
And Ms. Frazier's here to answer any particular questions you may have.
Alright, thank you very much. At this time, I'll take, uh, anyone from the public who wishes to speak on ordinance O-dash-18-dash-10. Alright, seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, uh, by Vice Mayor Kitchen is second, by Mr. McPartlin. Any further discussion, my counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilmember E. Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
There's no unfinished business tonight. Uh, this leads us to item 14, public input. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on any item that's not already on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Back in school, you called me sir. Okay. Bob Steven, 150 Concha Drive. I wrote myself out some notes, so I won't be so scattered. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Uh, I'm with the People for Clean Water in Sebastian, and I'm here to address the chemical spraying in our waterways in Sebastian. Um, last week, we had a, uh, request for alternative from Mr. Dodd, and, uh, tonight I have, I have that list of alternatives for you all. I will leave it with you, Mr. Dodd, and you could photocopy it maybe and give it to the rest of them.
Yeah.
Is that how I do it? Okay, give you that. And, uh, I have one last thing here. Um, this is the second time I've given you this report on the alternative, and it's, uh, two years old now. Kinda gave up my fight on that one, but there are some new stuff out on top of that, and there are a couple new communities that are doing it too. But we gave this to the National Resource Board in April of 2016, and they went to share it with the council. Um, you know, I think it's time, you know, I came here to retire, I will do some volunteer stuff, but I think it's time for you to, as a council, direct your staff, you have an environmental technician, to start doing some of this work. Look at some of the other towns that are doing the right thing, and, and they're working on cleaning their water up. I don't know whether you realize that, but we've got dirty water. Um, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, other people are doing it now, the country's aware of it. We can't keep poisoning ourselves. You know, remember what Aaron Brockovich said, you know? We're all just spraying ourselves to death. So, that's it with me. I hope you enjoy the papers I gave you.
Alright, thank you very much, sir. Anyone else in the public wish to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Graham Cox. I live at 1213 George Street in Sebastian. I wanna do two things if I can in the five minutes we've got here. Uh, first, I'm gonna put on my hat as a member of the Pelican Island Audubon Society and give you a flyer, each of you a flyer, uh, essentially advertising a conference, a second conference on transforming landscapes for a sustainable future. That is urging people, uh, and we've been doing this for some time, uh, where they can to replace their grass and their turf with Florida native species. And the conference schedule, February the 2nd, at the Indian River County Fairgrounds, seven speakers, it lasts all day, 10 bucks, uh, and people will learn, uh, from a bunch of experts just what they can do in their own yards, uh, to plant, uh, native trees, bushes, and all manner of vegetation, rather than having to go out every weekend, mow more green grass and more green grass. So, if I can, I.
Please present that to the clerk, and she'll make sure that we get.
But there's one for everybody up on the.
Very good. Just hand it to her, thank you very much.
And the second item I wanna just bring to your attention, I know, Mr. Dodd, at the last meeting, that Bob Steven has already referred to, he asked about where were these 60 alternative means of dealing with, uh, with, um, aquatic weeds. Bob gave you, uh, the sheet, it's got 30 of them on here, and there's another bunch in a book I'll tell you about in a second. But there's, these are all approved systems, or some are, there are 60 plus approved methods of dealing with aquatic weeds, including totally draining ponds, up to spraying chemicals and using mechanical means, physical means, you name it, there are ma, ways to do it. So, what I'd like to do is just urge everybody here to think about how you would, how you would implement alternatives to spraying chemicals that really are not good for health. The bible on this job, on this issue is a thing called Biology and Control of Aquatic Plants. Uh, it's done by Consulting and Research Operations in Georgia, but it's the bible being promoted by, uh, uh, the Extension folks, the University of Florida, in the state of Florida. And I'd be happy, I don't know how we get you to all read this thing, but it tells you what are the alternatives, what are the pros, what are the cons, what are the ways to deal with this thing. What I wanna also do, and I know you, several of you have only recently come on the council, is in, um, past meetings of the Natural Resources Board and city council, uh, we've stated what we think, uh, are alternatives for the city, and why we should pursue alternatives. And I'd like, if I can, to give you, once again, for the minutes, of those comments that we provided at that time. Uh, some of them a little dated, because it was back in April of 2016, and I know we've made presentations and comments to you several times since then, and I know you're sick of hearing it, but we prefer that you, uh, uh, consider what we do have to say. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please, uh, just hand this to the clerk, and, and she'll take care of that for you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Anyone else this evening have anything to speak on? Alright, seeing none. Move to new business, item 15A, first reading of ordinance number O-dash-19-dash-02.
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, amending chapter 102, article 5 of the Code of Ordinances, providing for clarification, utility fee credits, and establishment of fees, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, this is the first ordinance we, we addressed in the workshop regarding stormwater fee credits, and so we'd ask the city council to consider this, for the time of first reading. Provide staff with any direction.
Sorry, provide any direction that you see the staff may need to make to modify this ordinance, and to, uh, to get the program, uh, up and, up and going in time to allow us to provide those credits to those individuals that are due prior to the, the tax bills going or trim notices going out. And again, this provides opportunity for those that were never able to get credits, have opportunities to get credits, for tho, it addresses those individuals that have property that don't discharge into the city and don't affect the city to get a, a greater credit, and for those that want to do more to get a, a higher level of credit. So, it encourages environmental, uh, compliance and environmental stewardship at the most. So, we would take any direction from city council at this time.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel, what's your pleasure on ordinance O-dash, uh, nineteen dash O-two?
I, I move approval on first reading, uh, pending modifications, uh, to section one oh two, one twenty-eight that we discussed during the workshop.
Second.
Motion is second. I'll now take input from the public. Mr. Carey, please come forward.
Obviously, the direction of this thing is to provide, uh, water that flows from the city to the lagoon to be as clean as possible, and obviously with as little effort and pain to the people that are involved in it. Uh, I felt the pain when I put my project together a number of years ago. It was designed in a manner to, uh, provide total retention, twenty-four hour, hundred year storm, if I remember the docks. This was a, um, St. John's management, uh, project. The end result was, we put in parking and driveways that are semi-pervious. They are not paved. They're not concrete, they're not asphalt. It is a deep section of material that absorbs, and it is topped with eight inches of granite. Now, in the ordinance, as you have it constructed at the moment, I see that, uh, there is no determination for semi-pervious material. That is something that, if you are considering a storm fee credit, it becomes very important. If this is something that will be addressed by staff, reference the original stormwater permit as to what was pervious and what percentages, uh, then we're good to go. But otherwise, that's missing in the ordinance. There are semi-pervious methods, and they, of course, uh, contribute to the well-being of the aquifer. So, at that point, we designed the whole project to do just that. We have so little pavement over at our project, you can't hardly find it. It's under the building. So, uh, those sorts of things concern me, have actually from the beginning. A lot of people look at, uh, me when I come in and say, "Well, watch out, here he comes again." But, uh, that is not necessarily the way I operate and have never had. I try and keep things environmentally correct. I have a plant that deals with, uh, noxious materials. I have been eyeballed by EPA for years, and they finally quit coming, because I wasn't doing anything that concerned them. Uh, though there were many people that continued to call, and the eventual answer was, "No, we've been there, we've done that, thank you very much for calling." And, uh, I hope that that alleviates any fears that, uh, I'm over there contaminating the world. I'm not General Motors, I'm not going to, uh, cause that kind of havoc. Uh, I will have to sit down with, uh, staff and see how these feels, uh, if I can manage the credits, which I think I should be able to. I will sit down with your staff, as I mentioned before, and, uh, see where this is going. Now, there are parts of the ordinance that are talking about twenty-four hour, twenty-five year. We're designed, I, I think, well beyond that. And as I mentioned, we have no drainage into the city whatsoever, none, zero. Ten percent is an in, interesting thing to, uh, uh, scratch paperwork and say, "No, he's not dumping into the city." So, uh, even the ten percent thing is, uh, questionable as to validity. The ordinance, when you read it, it says to administer in a, an impartial and so on and so forth. I forget what the exact, uh, words are in here. I don't try and memorize these things, there are too many pages. But the fact is, it says, uh, that it's to be done in an equitable manner, and when it is impacting the city to a zero amount, uh, any fees are not really equitable.
You have about thirty seconds.
About thirty seconds? Oh, yeah, about thirty seconds.
That's right, sir.
Oh, wonderful. Well, one of the other issues I have is, in the old ordinance, we had, and the budget, by the way, we were giving money away to what is referred to as, uh, I don't know, uh, there's a name for it, and I didn't bring it up with me. But we had allotted about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this, and by accounting, a number of those, those dollars have been given out already to grants to improve the, I think that's an improper use, because there's another method of keeping that money within the city, whether it's today or ten years from now, it should be locked up.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I would like to address that with staff also.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on ordinance O-dash-nineteen dash O-two? All right, I just have a question, one, one question. The, the pervious versus impervious, um, is, is that part of the process to, uh, gain credits for, uh, for the stormwater utility?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other questions, uh, from council on this? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item C, award continuing professional airport engineering services. Mr. Carla?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we had, um, the contracts had, had, had run out, except for one, on our consulting engineers for the airport, for planning and for projects and for grants. Uh, Mr. Baker put out a request for qualifications. We received four proposals from four very quali, qualified individual firms, and we're asking the city council to consider awarding to all of them, because they all have a unique set of expertise in different areas, and so we can utilize the expertise in each one of those to provide planning, project oversight, grant writing, grant acquisition, and grant management. So, uh, we wouldn't be spending any money on them unless we actually did a work authorization, so we'd let, we'd ask staff to, or ask council to award those four contracts.
Counsel, what's your pleasure on item fifteen C?
Mayor, move approval of it.
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Stokes, um, nothing additional for you tonight. Thank you. Mr. Carla?
Mr. Mayor, there's just one item that I want to discuss. You know, we put in for the appropriations for the septic to sewer, we've, we've got a little bit of a conflict, because we, we have legislative days as March twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh to go up and talk with our legislatures, and those surrounding legislators that are, that would help support this project, and that happens to be a council meeting night. I don't know if city council would entertain the idea of excusing me to go up to that meeting. I don't know what city council's pleasure is, but in order to start putting meetings together, I need to start providing calendar dates to the, or times and dates during that time to, to the legislators to try to get meetings with them. I think it's important that we try to get these dollars as, I think it's important to our lagoon, I think it's important to get these residents and businesses off the septic system and onto sewers, but we don't have a professional lobbyist, and unfortunate, and so fortunately or unfortunately, it's going to be up to us to, to sell our project to them against the high-paid lobbyists of that small amount of money that they led, the legislators put in the budget every year for what they call water projects, which this falls under. Uh, last year, there was over ninety million in water projects applied for, and I think it was around ten or twelve million that they, they funded, so.
Real quick, uh, the, the twenty-seventh of March, um, the, would you be able to, um, would there be any issues that wouldn't be able to be worked around if that meeting were not to take place?
Not to my knowledge. There's no pending ordinances out in that, out, out there right now.
Hey, counsel, I'd, uh, with that, I'd make a motion to cancel the twenty-seventh meeting, um, but put as the twenty-seventh, an alternate, should we have some, I'm sorry, the twentieth, as an alternate, should we, uh, have something come up that needs council attention?
So, we'll be meeting on the thirteenth and the twentieth?
If we need to meet on the twentieth, then if there's something that comes up, then we would do that. Is that all right? Is that, you take care of it?
Fine.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else?
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Williams?
Can, can I just ask, there's a CRA report due that's March twenty-seventh. Is that okay to move forward or back? The CRA annual report? Move it forward?
Move that to the thirteenth?
Absolutely. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have no other issues.
All right, great, thank you. Councilmember McPartlin?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, just the one thing, uh, we did, uh, have the opportunity, me and Mr. Stokes and